Probably.
Ryan.
Here.
Karen Nordine.
Here.
Commissioner Zer.
Here.
Commissioner Becca. Commissioner Clement.
Here, our first word of business tonight is to adjourn to closed session. I would hear a motion to adjourn to closed session on your 19:85 one C. We will be discussing the superintendent's annual evaluation.
Oh.
Harry, whenever you're ready, please call, we will call.
Commissioner Farrar, yes. Commissioner Johnson. Our Lions.
Yes.
Karen Nordine.
Yes.
Commissioner Zer, yes. Commissioner Becca, yes.
We are in trip. We will resume the open session at around 7:00 P. M.
Welcome, everybody. We will reconvened here in open session. The board took no action during its closed session. We'll move directly to our pledge of allegiance. Tonight's pledge leader is Vivon Brombott, son of Visma and Krishna, who is currently a fifth grader at Robbins Elementary School. And Principal Donzie writes of Vivon, "It's one of our goals at ECASD to create the future," and Vivon is truly doing just that. He is an exceptional student, an excellent leader, and also, most importantly, a kind and respectful young man who gets along well with peers and staff. He is filled with great ideas and loves to think of ways to improve on the world around him. Our future is in good hands, thanks to students like Vivon. He's a wonderful representative of the importance of curiosity and creativity that we strive to instill at Robbins Elementary. Vivon, thank you for being with us here today. Those of you who are willing and able, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vivon.
Now move to the adoption of tonight's agenda. I would hear a motion to adopt the agenda for the evening. All those in favor of the adoption of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? The agenda stands approved. We start, as always this evening, with our recognitions, and we'll turn it over to Superintendent Johnson.
Good evening, Chair Nordine, board members, student representatives, administration, as well as our distinguished guests. We have three of them this evening. First is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, which is today, and we're so very grateful for our Eau Claire Police Department School Resource Officers and all they do for our students, staff, and families. We appreciate the ECPD and all law enforcement for their support of our schools and community. Second of all, Adult Crossing Guard Appreciation Week. Our state superintendent of public instruction, Dr. Jill Underlee, declares this week as Adult School Crossing Guard Recognition Week. Adult school crossing guards often serve with dedication in the rigors of harsh weather, split shifts, heavy traffic, and especially, I believe, this December and early January, very high snowbanks. They serve our communities to make them more secure and add to the effectiveness of student safety patrol officers whom they help direct. We're very appreciative of all our crossing guards and everything they do to help keep students safe. Thank you for your hard work and dedication to the students and schools. After our third recognition this evening on hand, I'd like to have Roosevelt Crossing Guard Steve Boyle step up. I do have a certificate here, so we'll get that done after our third recognition, which is National Mentoring Month. January is National Mentoring Month, and a huge thank you to so many of our staff and community members acting as mentors to students in our schools, and you are very appreciated. Here, take it right there.
One, two.
Three.
Two.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is our public forum. However, this evening, we have no one signed up to speak during our public forum, so we'll move directly to our regular reports. We'll start, as always, with the referendum committee and Commissioner Lyons.
Report.
And we'll move directly to Dr. Johnson, our legislative liaison.
Thank you. Governor Evers will continue his statewide Doing the Right Thing Listening Session Tour, including a visit to Eau Claire on Wednesday, January 18th at 5:30 P. M. Interested attendees can register online. Some topics that have been discussed during other listening sessions across the state include mental health concerns for students and educational staff, fully funding special education services in which we, the state of Wisconsin, ranks in the bottom, bottom 40th of states, revenue limit increases, and then concerns as it relates to pre-K childcare needs for families attending public schools. Governor Evers will also deliver his 2023 State of the State address on Tuesday, January 24th at 7:00 P. M. From the Wisconsin Policy Forum, driven down by a $1 billion income tax cut and tight limits on property taxes, Wisconsin's state and local tax burden fell in 2022 to its lowest level on record since 1970 when tracking began. Local taxes as a share of income have never been lower in more than half a century of data, and state and federal taxes on family and businesses are also near historic lows. Wisconsin falls to middle of the pack in school spending. Wisconsin's school spending compared to other states found a continuation of the decline in the state's ranking. Per 2020 Census Bureau data, Wisconsin's spending of $12,740 per student in public elementary and secondary education was 25th in the nation and 5.6% below the national average. In 2002, the earliest year for which comparable data are available, Wisconsin ranked 11th. Not surprisingly, given the state and local taxes are the primary funding source of K-12, which they are the lowest in fifty years, the decline in Wisconsin's school spending rank was consistent with its declining tax burden, which fell from 5th in the United States in 2002 to 23rd in 2019. The 2023 Wisconsin State Education Convention will begin on January 18th through 20th in Milwaukee at the Wisconsin Center. The United States Department of Education recently added and updated approximately three dozen FAQs regarding how stimulus funding can be used to respond to the pandemic, including additional information about using those funds for STEM education. Educating for a diverse democracy: The killing role of political conflict in blue, purple, and red communities. This study finds that U.S. public high schools are increasingly limited in their ability to support this vital goal. It concludes that most secondary administrators feel something needs to change or else there will be a mass exodus from the public education ranks. It identifies substantial political conflict with some parents or members of the community last year over several controversial topics, including teaching about issues of race and racism, policies and practices related to LGBTQ+ students' rights, social-emotional learning, and then student access to books in the school library. It also suggests that most parents are supportive of school districts' efforts in the learning experiences of their children. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. We'll now move on to the consent agendas for the evening. For each of the consent agendas, the board considers approval with one vote without discussion. Items on the consent agenda have been discussed at a previous meeting or have been provided background information to board members. If a board member wishes to discuss any item, it can be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. Tonight's superintendent's consent agenda includes Human Resources Employment Report, Financial Report, November 2022, Administrator Contract Renewals, and Head Start Grant Approval. I would hear a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Harry, when you're ready, please conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner Farrar?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
We'll now move on to the board's consent agenda. The board's consent agenda tonight includes minutes of board meeting, December 19th, 2022, resolution authorizing the American Deposit Management Company as designated depository for district funds, and proclamation recognizing National Human Trafficking Awareness Month. I would hear a motion to approve the board's consent agenda.
Moved.
All those in favor of approving the board's consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Consent agenda is approved as well. Now move on to our regular monitoring of district results. Tonight, we have two monitoring reports, both from our operational expectations. We'll start with Operational Expectation Five, Student Success. I'll turn it over to you, Superintendent Johnson, and then we will discuss and approve the report afterwards.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to invite Executive Director Van Vliet to the podium. I will not take very much time with student success with a summary. For the most part, the majority of our success indicators were in compliance with exceptions. We do draw largely, I'm sorry, Executive Director Van Vliet, if you want to stay back there and answer a question, I would assume, or if you're more comfortable up here, that's totally fine. I think I may have caught you by surprise there. Okay. Anyway, you know, in reading through this document, you could probably see that we draw largely on, you know, results number two monitoring report for data with our student success indicators. With OE five, as well as OE 10, with Executive Director Johnson, later with financial administration, there's quite a bit of detailed work that I think any questions or comments would probably be best answered by our executive directors. But in these two, OE five and OE 10, but right now OE five, you will note that there were quite a bit of indicators that we had altered a bit, and I think now this is our second year of the monitoring reports. When we felt that we had similar evidence or the same evidence, we thought that it would be better to merge some of those monitored, I'm sorry, some of those indicators. And that's especially, especially true for OE 5.3 because of the EMLSS work that we've been doing and the work we've embarked on with our instructional program review. So when it comes down to the evidence in OE, I believe it's 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, 5.6, and 5.7, you know, those are the types of questions and comments and things that Mandy and her team can illustrate. We're also recommending, and we did not put forth, or actually, we did in this one, combining 5.2 and 5.8 because they are so similar. Obviously, that would be a board work session item, but that's just for proposal. With disaggregating and studying student data, as I mentioned before in those subgroups, we do that often in R2. But that comprehensive process for curriculum review, alignment, and adoption of resources and the heavy lifting that had been done and will be illustrated, you know, especially in the summertime of 2022, and that's continuing right now. Much like OE 10 with DPI regulations, the district has expectations and regulations for its curriculum, you know, to state and to align that to state national model standards, and then measuring our progress toward achieving those in compliance. I guess second to last, you know, last year, when we had presented this monitoring report, we were not in compliance with 5.9. I'm pleased to report that we are. Right now, it was the consideration in environmental aspects of textbook and materials acquisition with our selection processes. We are now in compliance of that. And so basically, that's somewhat of a thumbnail sketch of the summary, and I know we'll want to get into, you know, various indicators and the levels of compliance. So at this time, you know, we'll take any questions, comments. Executive Director Van Vliet is here, as well as our directors, Heather Grant and Michelle Radke. They're quite a bit of a team effort on this, on this OE five monitoring report.
Thank you, Superintendent Johnson. The floor is now open for comments and questions from board members or student representatives. Commissioner Lyons is, and he's, I believe, ready to do it.
I am, please.
I reminded, I remembered early today rather than throwing one of you under the bus immediately as it happens. Commissioner Zer.
So. I think that this, this OE is, has been on my mind a lot because I think sometimes when we're talking about when we're monitoring results, we venture into the weeds of what should be saved for this, you know, which is really the how we're getting there, right? And I think there's a potentially just a lot of, of. So what I've been really impressed with is where we see some of these big initiatives in the district. And Executive Director Van Vliet, I think a lot of this probably is falling on your team and on the shoulders of, you know, of the EMLSS. Some of those, you know, I want to see us continuing to blast through some of those academic achievement goals. I would like us to achieve that 80% long before what is predicted. And I think that between those goals, what the board sees as those goals and just the, this system of where we're headed, is this work. So, and I think specifically here, there's a couple of systems or procedures in here that I maybe have some questions about or just, maybe they're not even, they might be questions, they might not be. So I guess the first one is 5.2, and specifically related to program review. And I think I'm bringing this up because, you know, what our district has walked through and is walking through related to the foreign language program review has been challenging, right? And I think we have an opportunity here, and I see that, am I correct, that there will be a guide for how program review will be done moving forward that will be published by June? Is that, am I to understand that's correct? Okay. So perhaps you can speak a little bit, and if it's not ready, that's fine, but maybe what lessons have we learned from the World Languages Program Review? And how are we going to sort of, how are we taking some of those lessons and wrapping them in to the guide for how we will address all program review moving forward?
I think I'll bring your attention to, on page five, in that narrative section where we give detail about the instructional program review. In the second part of the, where the bulleted list there, as part of this review, organizational structures will be developed. Right in there, the first bullet is seek stakeholder input and feedback. So there, we are, as we develop the instructional program review, there is a time and place for stakeholder input and feedback. And as we, depending on the review of the content area, where the process will be to identify the stakeholders through that process, and then develop entry points to whether or not you need input and/or feedback, or feedback along the way throughout that review process. So for example, if you go above and look at, hopefully, you can see the making of a seven-year review process. So during that visioning and research, that might be a very appropriate time to bring stakeholders in to have them part of the process of that visioning and research. Continuing through that one or two years process, depending on what is occurring, maybe some decisions are being made about going a certain direction with the program, and then curriculum writing begins, and/or then the following year, and then we begin implementing. There may be times during that monitoring and adjusting that we also need to seek feedback from other stakeholders. How's it going from parent perspective? What are students feeling? What are they, what are they, what are their insights onto the program that we are implementing? So that will be part of the process is looking at along that seven-year process, what is the right entry point, and it might be different depending on the content area. But that will be part of the review process of that team that's coming together to kind of plan out that seven-year plan out that's going to look like.
One thing I'd like to add, Commissioner Zer, you know, what have we learned, you know, over the past month, month and a half probably with this? And I articulated this at the Mung Association Meeting last week, as well as probably an open session on the 19th maybe, but definitely with Mung PTA as, as Mandy had set, you know, certain stakeholders to the table as, as part of that input, feedback loop. And using, you know, and also our Director of EDI, one thing that we haven't discussed much is the data that Director Van Vliet has pulled for the students taking the courses. If we were to use that data from, let's say, technology education, when we go through that process, I'm sorry, I don't have the seven-year plan memorized, but when we have the technology education piece to enlist the, you know, people at the table, not only Director of EDI, but pulling data on who's taking the courses, also the business community, also possibly CBTC, CISA, because we are doing some work with CISA with that, you know, those would be some people that just offhand with a different department would be consulted. Hope that helps a little bit.
Yeah, and I think that, I think that that's just going to be, I think what might be helpful for us is as we, as we look at kind of some of the, the, now, now that these things are starting to get enacted, these like processes by which we reach those results goals, right? I think if we can sort of see how, how the EDI, the equity statement about, you know, that how that work is being built into those levels, you know what I mean? So that, so that we have confidence that that's occurring, I think, would be helpful. You know, another thing that, that I would like to be considered, and I don't know, I'm sure that it is, but, you know, where are staff who are teaching those things? Where are they involved in that sort of step one to two year, right? Because I think that that was another piece that was perhaps missing from the World Language Review that, that seems like perhaps something that could be considered to be done in that phase. But if possible, could that be shared when that plan is written? Could we see then? Would that be possible to just, just to, yeah, just to look at it?
Staff are, all, all along through these steps are embedded through the process completely. This is not work that teaching and learning would do in isolation at all. It would be done with building staff, building administrators, and teaching and learning would take, would really take the responsibility of facilitating the process and then facilitating the necessary steps for implementation.
And I can add to that, you know, the progress along the way, one thing I've, I've done, I know the last two years, when we've had our data retreat, and certain findings, I believe we usually had that the last couple days of July. And after Mandy and her team and our system leaders go through that process, to then share, what were the findings? Here's the PowerPoint. I think like we had done that first week of August, you know, here's just an example of the work that we're undertaking right now without the data because it's embargoed, but for the most part, we're able to share, here's our progress. Here was the PowerPoint. Here were the, I believe, it could have been in memo format, if I'm not mistaken. I know I had shared the PowerPoint summers on, and here's what we were up to for two solid days in the summertime. We brought all of our system leaders together.
I think Commissioners, there, one of the ways that we're approaching this work is how we approached the development of the instructional framework this past summer. That was an open invitation to any ECASD staff member that wanted to participate, and that work was done very collaboratively. And that is a way that we want to lead forward, is doing that work together. And that is an example of what that could look like or would look like moving forward.
One other thing, but I, someone else wants to say something first.
Better to just run it all at once and then.
Okay, so, and I'm going to move on to five. Oh, gosh, where is Innovation? So, thank you. So this is perhaps something I brought up also, and this, this has been on my mind before World Language, which perhaps was brought into a little bit clearer focus for me, for World Languages. So this is, this is my, this is like my baby. This is where I got started in education in Eau Claire, was in innovative programming. I'm a Montessori teacher by trade. So this is, the fact that we have a public Montessori school has always been, I think, a badge of pride. I think what's unique about Montessori is that we actually have a very clearly articulated, laid-out system by which we monitor, support, discuss it, approve it, move it forward, because it's a charter, right? So it has this, this big, long, complex contract that we all, shows us exactly what we're supposed to do, exactly what they're supposed to do, and how we're responsible to one another. I think we have a lot of innovative programs in the Eau Claire School District that don't have that luxury. And there's a lot of things that, that don't monitor necessarily as a board, and not that we need to, but that I'm not confident, I could say, we are, we are doing our due diligence to support them in what they need. We are, we are giving the resources equitably to them that they deserve as incubators of, of new and innovative ideas for, for our kids. And so I, I'm curious here. Not so, the process by which we identify an innovation zone, I don't want to call it a zone, innovative program, an innovative something, school program zone, classroom, I don't know. We used to have LEAP. I think LEAP was not, maybe not the right thing for right now, and we just, we could very easily just forget it. But I think the, you know, process by which we identify. And once we've identified, what does that mean for those programs? So we have dual language immersion, which this board authorized, and since my time here, we have never discussed again, you know? And I feel like I don't know where that program's headed. I don't know what comes next. I don't, you know, Montessori, we get the report, maybe we got something from Pam talking to the president about their enrollment numbers, you know, so we've, and I think we've made a scene of contracts. We always have McKinley's contract. So, you know, we do have ways by which we monitor the charter schools. We don't have ways by which we monitor or touch it, you know, and I think that, that those either could be part of this in the future when we have an identified, and so I think, I think what I'm missing here is actually identification of innovative programs. So the process is here, right? Processes for program development, and then how to retire some and how to develop them. I think that has to come too, but I think actually just identification. And so my, my thing with World Languages was because perhaps Mung is going to need a unique set of resources behind it because of its unique situation, right? The licensure situation, the enrollment situation, we dedicate ourselves to it. Perhaps it's an innovative program, and ergo has a different set of sort of, you know, rules by which it is governed. So, and I'm not saying that's what we need to do with it. I'm just thinking it's a possibility, right? By which we look at it, and it sort of gets a different kind of set of evaluations around it. So for me, this is a weak, this is a weak spot here in a big, big way because I think we need to identify. I think, and obviously, we have the noncompliance status here. And I, I am excited to see how equity is woven into some of the supports that we put behind innovation because I think innovation in and of itself requires equitable, a, a, a different type of resource allocation. a different type of resource allocation, right? Like it just has to have something different behind it to make it to make it go. So, you know, how, what, what, how are we going to apply equity to innovative programming? So I think that's, I don't, I don't know that I have a lot, and maybe need a lot of input from you guys, or have a lot of questions. I think for the purpose of Phil. I think this is, this is something that I feel could use some development, identification, and then obviously bringing these indicators into compliance. So that we can and then how is this board going to relate to innovative programming? Because we monitor a couple of them. But we don't monitor all of them.
I think part of that, and I think it was from a previous boardman, board meeting, or maybe some other communication was if I were to ask, or if we were to ask all seven board members to define innovation. We may have some differences in opinion on that, and that's okay. What I had written down, once you said zone, I wrote down, well, I wrote down Arctic Zone, I wrote down dual immersion. Could we list and and, you know, so Phil can put that in the summary where we can bolster that to to meet those objectives. But I think to share student data, to share student demographics. We as an executive team have had discussions about both programs. Was invited by Principal Fisher to possibly attend, I guess, the next dual immersion, maybe parent meeting or group meeting. And also Director Van Vliet's and her team's conversations with DPI about other innovative programs, whether it was Mung Language or Dual Immersion. How other schools are sometimes the challenges that we might have for for hiring. And sustaining our programming and our staffing. Some different ideas there. So, you know, I think the student data, the student demographics, and to share where we are in that process because the expectation is to grow Dual Immersion. And to take that through as many many grade levels as possible. But you're correct, in my time here for the past two and a half years plus, we haven't had necessarily, let's say, an information item on Dual Immersion or Arctic Zone or those types of.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that what, what, I I don't actually know what the board needs related to that. I, you know, I don't know what I need to see. I think once the process is developed, I'm sure there would be some sort of report or some sort of like analysis that could maybe even just be attached to like, you know, what are the goals currently? Where is, what is the status of Dual Immersion? What are the goals that are being worked on for it? You know? And and perhaps a yearly summary. I mean, obviously with the charter, we have a responsibility to that as a board. But part of that process is that we identify what we're going to do as a district to support that program. And I feel like I want to know what that is for our other innovative programs. And but again, I would just like to know what they are first. I don't want to know, I want to see what what they are. So that I I know what specifically we're we're talking about. And then, you know, again, the definition of how we do that, how we're gonna monitor them, and then how this body really needs to be in reaction to that. I think that those are kind of my that's just a weakness in here, but it might not be necessarily your weakness outside of what you've already said is noncompliance. However, I think that identification of innovative programs perhaps something is missing for me.
Commissioners, if I could just add a little bit, this one's, because we had a lot of conversation about this one too when we are putting this together. And I know that this isn't the answer to it solely, but if you go back to page five on the visioning and research, there would be an opportunity to explore innovative programming that might be connected to that content area and or program. So that we do have that in there is to to go down that path if if that is something that is connected to that. The other piece of our instructional program review process is continuous improvement. So right now, we're trying to put in a process that we can sustain the facilitation of. So something like the Dual Immersion. You're correct, there hasn't been really a review of that. So right now, we're trying to put all of our content areas on a review process so that we can produce reviews and give you updates, not only for you, the board, but the community and staff members, and help us understand and making decisions on what needs to change about it. So Dual Immersion is a great example. If we don't go through the visioning and research, looking at data, understanding where we're at, where do we want to take that program and understand the action steps that are going to get us there? We don't, we we don't know what we need to do or change for implementation moving forward. So if we can, you know, fast forward a few years when we've gone through this process with programs, things that we are currently doing or things that we have not yet do that we're have done, but yet we are going to implement, that will come, that work will come along with that. That kind of clarified a little bit, but that was our thinking when we were putting this together.
So we're thinking of innovative programming then as we would any other program. So so is that, is that my understanding that right? That like dual language immersion would be its own program review, so it would be on that seven year cycle?
Correct. We we would want to make sure that a program is significant as Dual Immersion and especially our investment and that we should continue investing in it, and we should continue to you know, making it better than what it is, that continuous improvement process. So how do we know that unless we've gone down a path of investigating and making sure that it is the best that it can be? So our content areas will be on a program review, and then there will be other pieces, you know, other conversations that we're having, like high school program review. If we just look like overall high school programming and the number of credits that our students need to obtain for graduation, we need to look at that as well as technology, English, math, like those broader things. Also, we need to do program review on those as well.
One a year, we're starting one a year, is that the idea?
Necessarily. Um, we'll have and that's the challenge of putting everything back on a on a cycle that we have the capacity.
Capacity is the thing that I'm sitting here going, oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do that too.
Okay.
That's hard. It's hard. Yeah, it's really hard. So.
Dr. Johnson.
Yeah. Forgive me, I'm and I did some, this is my third thing of coffee. I've never gone past two cups of coffee, so I'm I'm not really sure kind of how the rest of this night's actually going to go here. But so this instructional program review process, I, you know, I I'm I'm overall hesitant. As we as we move through this new evaluation governance model and how how this works to have everything predicated on what ifs and given the timeframes that kind of exist. So could we step, could we take a step back? And could you tell me? What 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 is available now in the district? Or what was the district using to determine instructional programs alignment with best practices? Because for me, it's what I don't want to happen. And it and it and it appears that this has a likelihood to happen, and it may end up being favorable. But is it is an attempt to just jump to something new? Or can you provide why, why implement this instructional review program? So so I I, because what what I would expect is the reason, the reason we would, we are going to an instructional program review. The current practices, whatever they were, if there were something were ineffective and why? And this instructional program review solves those particular concerns. And so can you, and and if there's not, if there's not an answer, that's fine as well, but what's what are, what's available to us now? Or what are we using to determine instructional programs alignment with best practices? What what do we have available to us now?
I don't, I don't know if I can speak to what has been placed in place in the past. I mean, I've certainly, in my role as Director of Special Ed or as a principal, been part of some program reviews. One of the things that we're trying to do is get at exactly what you're talking about. So you hear us talk a lot about establishing systems and processes. And from what we have found and from my experience, when a school or a district lacks systems and processes, and when there is over time, a change in leadership, these things deteriorate and things don't get done, and there's no plan for something. So what we are really focused in on right now is putting these structures in place so that it can continue and it can move forward over time. And even when uh, there's a change in leadership, directors come and go. I mean, I hope to be in this position for a long time, but if somebody else comes in and replaces me, they can see what programs have been reviewed, which ones hasn't, where are we at in the cycle, and the work can continue. So when this type of work, when there's a pause in this work and it hasn't happened for a number of years, it piles up and there's a honestly, where we're at right now, trying to put everything back on a schedule and move forward in a way that we can sustain, it's very overwhelming. And we don't want to flounder. We don't want to be overwhelmed. Our staff don't feel good about the work that we're doing. So we're really trying to avoid that and put in systems and processes that can be sustained over time.
One thing I'd like to add, Dr. Johnson, sorry, I think I
Oh, go ahead.
interrupted you before you get that fourth cup of coffee.
I think I think the third is actually kind of my limit.
But I was, that I was an outsider until July of 2020. But in my discussions with Dr. Hardbeck prior to, you know, with that transition, the word I would share and what I learned from probably over seventy-five key communicators in the system is the word collaboration. I think there is direct correlation between the data with our student achievement from 2017, especially at the middle level, falling. Now, with with the pandemic, it certainly hindered our ability to collaborate, not just as administrative teams, but with staff members, with departments. On two occasions in the last two months, without any prompting, I have had people come into my office or I've seen in the hall that are that are doing this work with departments here to say, you know, like, I've been here a long time, this feels good. Like, we're going through some heavy lifting here. They pointed to people like Michelle Radke. As a matter of fact, to say, you know, we haven't done this work in quite some time together as an entire department. In the last two years, we were discussing it, but because of our inability to get substitutes and to pull people from the classrooms, I mean, many of us here were substituting up until probably February of last year. But really with the instructional review process and how things had started the summer and into the fall and now into 2023, the ability to collaborate is most important. I think that's been lacking from what I've heard from many. We're talking teachers, we're talking principals, now they're executive directors. I mean, three of them could speak to that since 2017, because I do believe Mandy and Kim, two of them were principals back in 2017. I've heard that from people who were in the department at that time as well as you know, and speaking with with Principal Schmidt as well. Just our inability to be able to collaborate as an entire K-12 PE department or six, twelve, or nine, twelve English department, for example. You know, I've heard from three departments this year with this work. Science, English and math, just about the the work that needs to be done. That some people said, we had not done that in quite some time. And that's, that's the key. If we don't work together, we're not going to improve. We're not going to go, we're not going to be able to exchange ideas. We're not going to be able to align, but I just wanted to share that, no.
Okay, so so there's there's some, there's some uncertainty of of what has been done and or the earliest you can actually potentially find information about an extensive program review. What you hope this instructional program review you're proposing now is 2017. Is that, or it's sporadic by academic content area? Or it would, it's, it's, I I guess for me, where where I'm I don't know, maybe the instructional program review once, some of the kinks and some other, as you identified, considerations and concerns are addressed. But there there has to, there has to be, there has to be a reason why, and that reason why has to be articulated. Why, why do we, why do we do this news? Why do we propose this new system? And it has to be articulated somewhere that we're unable to capture sufficient enough data from current practices, whatever they are. Maybe we don't know them, or it's so sporadic. And and I I'm this is a challenge for me. The the other piece, I guess, and these are just other comments to consider. You use the same indicators for five, for five, three and five, four. You you substitute the evidence only for the elementary grade book under five, four. My question or concerns, was it discussed amongst your group? It is quite possible that actually five, three and five, four can just be one. Five, four being a subcomponent of of a five, three. I, at this point in time, I think we should be about efficiency as well in terms of kind of where 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 your staff is. Five, six, I I I would hope, five, six, can you, can you pinpoint what you included here? Where are, or where would, where would information be about students with disabilities in five, six? Is it, is it, will it be, will it be somewhere, I I guess, because when I, when I think about, when I, when I think about five, five, six, a unit plan template, if we can't find any, what's the role of actually like IEPs in the instructional uh, uh, learning experience of students with disabilities? I I, something has to, has to be there for me. And then, I think, could you just say in five, five? Uh, because I I'm unfamiliar with the 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 programs that were mentioned. Is 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 the pro, one, any of these programs that are mentioned in the na, in the narrative piece? Do they include students with disabilities in them? Is, is there one program that's listed that specifically speaks to the needs of students with disabilities, or is Gateways like impacted somewhere in here? So I I I would like an answer to that one, though, so, yeah.
Tried to capture all of your questions, so I'm gonna go back to that first one I that you asked about 2017.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so the, we have a seven year cycle. So thinking through, we want all of our programs to be on a seven year cycle that we would review and go through a process of ensuring, adjusting and tweaking along the way. I wouldn't make the assumption that every instructional program is going to go through a significant change based on that review process. Some of it is just going to be tweaking and changing the curriculum. Some of it might be, we need to adopt a new curricular resource. It might be, we got to keep doing what we're doing, but we have to provide different professional learning for our staff. So I wouldn't make the assumption that it's always going to be this big change. Some programs might. That's a part of the visioning and research. And when we say research, that is looking at and measuring how well the program is currently meeting the needs of our students at that time. And we're going to continue to build on that. We know a big piece that we've shared here, and as part of this is establishing a guaranteed and viable curriculum. You know, I believe that when we establish a guaranteed and viable curriculum in a content area, we will see the needle move, and we're in the process of doing that. So that would be one thing. I think maybe that perhaps would answer your question on when a content area or when a program would be reviewed as well. So as part of that instructional program review process, our Special Education Department and our Student Services Department would also be reviewing their programs as well. So something like Gateways would be comparable to Dual Immersion. But anytime we have a new program and it's implemented, it is going to take some time to get it up and running, but you do continuously monitor, and it's, you know, going back to the stages of our review process, that monitoring and adjusting, which is four years, that is part of that process is to continuing to monitor and adjust as needed to meet the needs of that program. So any of our programs within our Special Education Department would also be going through that process of reviewing like Gateways, Life Without Limits, Project Search and such.
Yeah, I could illustrate Dr. Johnson's five, three and five, four. Dr. Johnson, and and obviously, this is a board, you know, when it comes to the five, three and the five, four, it's a board decision. If the board feels that we should move the two, that's, you know, that that's certainly within the board. that's, you know, that, that's certainly within the board's realm to do so. The conversations I had, the conversation that that Mandy had with her team, that did not. And the reasons why, you know, we really look at the verbs, in five-three, it's align, and in five-four, it was measure. And we didn't feel, and we did with, we do with all of them, especially on the second review. Are there ways that we can make these? If we can tighten them up a little bit or merge two if possible, but but to your uh to your question, Dr. Johnson, we, we didn't, but obviously with the, you know, we, I think it was five-two and five-eight that we did. We would propose a change to that, but we didn't with five-three and five-four, that did not come.
Gary, if you could make sure that uh Dr. Johnson's suggestion to consider five-three and five-four, and if, and this just occurred to me as, you know, I think about how we parse these out when we go to our next policy work session. If you could make a note that that was brought up by Dr. Johnson in the same way that you would make a note that potentially thinking about five-two and five-eight combed out, combining was an administrative that will help sort of remember who it was that brought it up, because, you know, Dr. Johnson, when we talk about it, it might be helpful for you to, you know, lead the thought.
You can put an asterisk by that he had three cups of coffee, so it may not actually
Sure, you know. MJ jittery.
Yeah, I think that's
Also, I, I don't mean to break you, but I just want to make sure that that got on the list for that recommendation. I'll turn it back to to you, Dr. Johnson.
No problem. Oh, yeah, I I I appreciate those pieces. I I just think we, we just kind of, uh, you know, I think as part of, as part of this equity lens as we look at it, that, you know, the, you know, the, the, those students, students with disability. I just had one one other piece and and I'll uh uh give the floor back to other board members, but I I would also ask that we consider in terms of the the timeline for academic programs and the the spec, the specialty programs. I, I don't know where we are in the cycle of like our dual immersion, but at some point in time, the the middle school learning experience for those, those group of students has to be kind of at the, at the forefront here. And so, you know, I I don't know what, uh, is there a what's a determination model in terms of kind of how, which uh which programs are uh examined or looked like, looked at on a, on a cyclical basis, but if 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 we're moving into this instructional program review process, I I I think it's also imperative that the, that the group use whatever existing data, if data is there. Those that potentially need uh more of a heavier lift and are sensitive urgency, which I think probably that dual immersion pieces and that they be moved further ahead than uh than than others. And then what I just, what you, what you pointed out could you just speak to, would, in this review, whether it's the monitoring or the adjusting, uh, the adjusting phase, is there a component in your development of this instructional program review? Because more than likely, what will happen? There will be, there will be grade levels and or there will be particular schools that will be performing better than others. How, how, how are the, and and I just hope it's just not by happenstance, hopefully, we can measure what those particular, those particular grade level instructors of that particular school, they're doing in terms of professional development, professional, our student learning experiences, that it's, it's replicable, right? So does, does that, does this uh instructional program review process allow for the uh 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 rep, uh replication of things that are actually working well and the uh uh elimination of things that are not working well? And I I I would hope that, so I, after watching the election of the House Speaker, I yield the remainder of my
I will answer your question. Um, and I forgot to mention that when we are putting our content areas back on a cycle, we're also trying to do that strategically, that it is aligned with um what is happening with DPI, so that when they rewrite or redo programmatic changes or um establish standards, that we are following behind them, so they're not this gap. At the same time, we're looking at all of our instructional programs and looking at where the priorities are. So dual immersion, we know that the middle school, I mean, those students are a few years from it yet, but we need to be planful in what that looks like. Um, and we're also looking at our data and understanding where the greatest needs are programmatic wise and moving that to the top of our priority list. So hopefully that answers that question. And then, yes, that, that would be definitely part of the process when we dig into the data, data, and I think this came up the presentation, our Focus on Results presentation in December, talking about, you know, our, our buildings are doing amazing things with students and teachers are trying different things all the time. And uh one of the things that we would look at, and that would kind of fall into the idea, is that maybe this is an innovative practice that the teacher is doing. Innovation doesn't only need to be a program, but it can be a strategy or a practice that a teacher is trying in the classroom. And when we can see a change in data that is sustained over time, that gets us excited. And we really want to look into that data to say, gosh, what is that, what's happening over in that school that their data is really sustained and it's trending upward? Let's dig into that and learn a little bit more about what they're doing. So we do that all the time, um but definitely, especially if there's some peaks that are noticeable as we do that data review, we definitely want to dig in to understand what's happening in that school. And I think that's why it's so important that staff are involved in this process. And a really important step that I want to highlight, just because it's so important, is on page five um in that second bulleted list is establishing organizational structures, which is um to build the capacity of teacher leaders and provide professional learning. So we have to establish, we have a lot of employees in this district and to provide and Superintendent Johnson spoke a lot about this, but how important collaboration is. That's how we learn from one another. Collaboration is part of our professional learning for our staff. So in that example, when a teacher or a school has seen success with a practice or a strategy, we want our educators to come together and collaborate so we can share that information and learn from one another. So I I wanted to highlight that because that is such an important part of this review process is we can facilitate the process, but we are not in the classrooms doing the work, our teachers are, and that we, they that's where the magic happens and that's where the magic in the conversation occurs. Those teachers being part of the process and having those collaborative conversations. But a really important piece of this is putting structures in place to allow for all of the employees to have the opportunity to do that.
Not only the opportunity, but I think that uh the 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 record, recognition or some form of uh of reward of actually wanting to be the teacher leader and are offsetting, uh whether it be workload, additional, because, you know, it it it's it's one of the things that the the university tries to actually create a lot of leaders, but the university doesn't actually increase anybody's a direct deposit. So, you know, you, you can't really, you know, uh, it ends up being like a voluntary type of type of piece. And so for who, who, who wants to do that? So incentivizing this aspect of, and and maybe it's the uh uh building morale. Maybe it's the uh the collaborative pieces that you, that you, you all were talking about, but that capacity doesn't happen unless there's this, this outcome that's meaningful to the individuals that are expected to deliver. And I, I, I think really focusing on that piece is also important.
Seeing no additional calls immediately and recognizing that our, we're kind of right now back on time for, I would hear a motion to approve OE five student success.
Motion to approve OE five student success.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded any discussion on the motion? Then the motion on the floor is to approve OE five student success. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Sorry, that was the delay on Commissioner Clements. You were, you were
I'm opposed.
You were opposed. Okay, thank you. All right, welcome, Commissioner Clements.
That was a voice from above.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now move on. Actually, I'll turn it over to you, Commissioner Lyons, just run through uh what you have down to make sure that we have captured for the summary statement.
Uh, strengths from OE five, uh, we have better segregation, the system leaders are engaged in summer reviews. Five-point-nine was not in compliance last year, we now are. We're trying to put our content areas into continuous review process, creating a feedback loop. Collaboration was previously lacking. Now working, departments are working together collaboratively and program review is striving to establish strengths. Weaknesses, uh, five-point-two program review. A guide on how that will be done, you know, details, what lessons were learned from work languages. The time process for stakeholder input. Also, take a step back, uh, what is available now? What are we using? Putting structures in place so that we know of the future, what programs have under, this is a program review, have undergone review. Why are we proposing a review system? What programs are chosen? Suggestion that five-point-three and five-point-four, same indicators, maybe combine those. Five-point-six, can you pinpoint where the info is on students with disabilities? IEPs and program reviews. Five-point-seven innovative programming. Um, an example, we have a contract with a monitoring built in at Montessori, but how do we define identify and measure other innovative programs in the district? Should the board be involved in the process of identification of programs and review? Innovative programming needs identification indicators, bringing indicators being brought into compliance and monitoring also included. What are exactly our innovative programs? Examples are Arctic Zone Dual Immersion.
Anything else that needs to be added or any comments on the summary? Commissioner Lyons, you're upright way again for note-taking on OE ten financial administration, and we'll turn it back to you then, Superintendent Johnson.
Thank you. Uh, much like I illustrated a little bit in OE five, um, for this, we've got expectations and requirements for financial administration through financial audits, through WRS, DPI and the IRS. They're noted quite often in the indicators. You know, the, some of the first um indicators we share are about our publishing, our financial statements and reports with accounting principles. We have the audits. In fact, Abby and I were talking last week about the auditors presenting at a future board meeting. Those are posted uh for download on our district's website. One thing that we talked about um with our procurement manual in shifting pieces of, I believe it was ten-eight, ten-two, would be our contracts for purchasing, supplies, materials, equipment, contractual services. There are quite a few indicators that, or the evidence was the same. We um eliminated some indicators and would be proposing those at a future um to impact policy, obviously, at our next work session. The activity funds, that was one of them that we felt was so minor that we wanted to alter too, but we, we do properly manage those according to DPI. I guess, you know, in terms of uh items that the board had discussed last year that we wanted to prove upon, um committing that funding and resources toward our PD and staffing, various equity efforts. Just as examples, the Avid Programming, the Power Perception, our new director of of um EDI, they're reflective of that responsibility. And then the environmental commitment and because of the successful passage of the referendum, that's able to be realized as well, that commitment too. But like I had mentioned a little bit before, we'd like to merge the policy language on ten-two and ten-three as the indicators and the evidence are very similar. And then shifting, you know, OE ten-point-five, that piece about um student activity accounts to an indicator in OE eight to an existing policy, because those procurement functions are well articulated and indicated in the earlier language, so. Obviously, we had that in, labeled and read for the board as well as the public. And at this point, if Abby wants to stay back there on the microphone, that's great for any questions, concerns, comments to discuss our compliance, our overall compliance with OE ten.
You again, Superintendent Johnson, comments or questions for regarding OE ten? Commissioner Lyons?
You know, I, I think it, it looks good. The one thing that I think that the board needs, and and I think we lost it with the budget committee, not being not being active anymore, but but the board without that is really not engaged at all in looking forward in what the financials are are doing in in forecasting and how we're doing. And where is our revenue going? Where is our expense going? And all of that forward kind of um understanding that the board needs to then be able to understand if large unexpected expenses, one-time expenses or longer-term base expenses like salary and benefits are presented to the board for decisions.
I think, you know, Phil, and that's what I, Abby and I talked about this, the next three board meetings, we have financial administration, we have three in a row for our finances. Exactly what you were discussing will really be on tap for
Okay.
the twenty-third, which would be OE nine. The budget, I I can't, it escapes me, Abby, the title, budget development and
financial planning.
And financial
And asset management is the last one.
The asset protect, protection would be on February sixth, but those, those three in a row, and just like you articulated, and Abby could speak to it too, that's actually, that was our discussion today to prepare for the board report in two weeks, so.
Okay.
Using forecast five and other measures and variables.
I also think, Commissioner Lyons, looking ahead into sort of year three of our monitoring cycle, you know, the the first year, we had sort of two, where we had the first draft, and then we had this year, I think we're, you know, testing the waters of can we do it with just the the one, and I think what I'd like to, you know, as I think ahead to next year's calendar, you know, building in regular, you know, board development on the budget.
Yeah.
You know, I, and I can, I work, you know, talk with Abby or will about, you know, how how regular is, you know, beneficial, so that we can get some of those discussions as a whole group, because we should now for the ups and downs of what we're working through here, we've, we've been able to do it with just one pass on these uh on the monitoring reports, so I think that does open up, you know, segments, and we can build those into the work calendar to give the administration, you know, to give Abby an idea of, okay, this is when I'm presenting on this thing and, you know, we can obviously work it out to when it would be appropriate for your workflow. But we can build more of that in to, so that we don't lose that that forward look.
Yeah.
So I think that, I think you bring up a good point. I, the floor is back to yours, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Comments or conclusions?
Dr. Beacon?
I have a question about ten-four, indicator one. It might it might be prudent to retain, strive to regarding the fund balance. Having served on Budget Development Committee for many years, we wrestled with this. There are reasons out of a district's control why the balance falls below twenty percent. And for other reasons, I think it's recommendation, you could revisit this again in three years. I want to make a change then, but for now, I'd keep it, strive to maintain.
But would you please uh move to amend the report when we go to the the approval to, to reject that change? So that, that would be how we, we could handle, if you wanted to keep the the language in as it was, that would be So that, that would be how we, we could handle, if you wanted to keep the, the language in as it was, that would be when we could do it.
I don't think I'm the authority on it because it's your, it's your plan, but I, so I'd be interested to hear what others think. I just.
Well, sure, but I mean, that's, that's how we would approach it, I guess, if you wanted to keep it in there, uh, you know, without amending it, the board would accept. Well, I hope this is wonderful. Sorry, uh, James, I'll be asking for a new computer.
Sure, I can share, or I can share the rationale. The reason why I took out, when Abby and I discussed this, we wanted to be more bold. We can strive all we want, but shall meant that commitment that we will. And if we weren't compliant in it, we would be able to maybe share, well, the, for example, the, you know, the state did not increase our per pupil funding or what have you. We had to draw from the fund balance, but that was the rationale that Abby and I, Abby want to concur or, you know, your thoughts on it too.
Yeah, I'll concur. We talked a lot about that because we know, you know, prior to COVID, we were not at that twenty percent that was recommended. And so we've had a, you know, three real good fiscal years. Um, but it was kind of the same thing as Mr. Johnson was saying was just like, well, we're in a good spot today, but what would happen if we're not? And how does that impact this? And we concluded that we would say we weren't in compliance because, um, why we, we tried really hard to get there, you know, prior to having that COVID year, we were under all of the time. And we talked a lot about revenue and, you know, the revenue committee that we had and the strategies that we were working towards to build more revenue. But the reality is first of all, districts, referendums are really outside of the legislator adding funds. Referendums are really kind of only that piece of it. And we felt that, that referendum conversation that, um, you know, we're continuing going forward to look at that regular strategy may help us, um, be able to maintain that again going forward. So, um, I think we can go either way on it. We did have a lot of discussion because of the fact that we have been successful in maintaining it for the last couple of years, but also reflecting that we were not, you know, just a short time ago in compliance with that.
In OE ten is a mark of those three strong years, and I think it is a, it's a real highlight, I think, for, uh, for you Superintendent Johnson, for, for you Abby, for the district, that we've gotten ourselves to a place where we are in a much more stable, including, you know, a two-year biennium that did not give us any more funds. And yet we've been able to do a lot with trying to keep up with C P I increases and, and things like that. And I, I, I do, uh, you know, I look forward to approving this and, and the compliance here is, is really a strength of this district. So thank you for the work that you've put in on that. At this point, I would hear a motion to approve OE ten.
Still moved?
Any discussion on the motion? Yeah, besides, satisfied me as well. Uh, hearing none, all those in favor of the approval of OE ten, please say aye. Opposed? OE ten is approved. Commissioner Lyons, sorry. Oh, sorry, yes. Commissioner Clements, I didn't wait for your vote.
You did?
Well, regardless, we'll, uh, you can just leave him, you know, he did, did not, you know, did not cast a vote, but that's fine.
Just no vote.
Yep. Commissioner Lyons, if you could just run through.
Uh, comply, uh, strengths, compliance with ten is a highlight of the district, reduce state spending, and yet balances grew. It's a strength of the district. There were administrative recommendations that were highlighted in red on OE ten, combining certain elements. Weaknesses, um, financial forecasting should be clearer, uh, but that is, uh, going to be included in the board report in a few weeks under a different OE. Keep fund balances in the report. Shall meant that, uh, is the comment that we will. Uh, we wanted to be bold. Prior to COVID, we fell below the twenty percent. If we needed to drop below, we did not want to be out of compliance. That accurate, that capture that. Okay. That's.
Great. Any other comments, additions, attractions? Thank you, Commissioner Lyons, if you can.
Oh, and then I had financial understanding can be included in a board work calendar for the future, uh, so that the board has, uh, clearer understanding of budgetary items.
Great, thank you. Uh, so you can send those on to me for compiling the summary documents. Uh, so our last item on the agenda this evening, uh, is matters reserved for board action, that is consideration of the twenty twenty-three W A S B resolutions. As a reminder to all of you, and as a first time for you, Dr. Farrar, W A S B has its delegate assembly next Wednesday at their annual convention, at which they, you know, one representative from each school board in Wisconsin is able to attend and vote to set, uh, the W A S B policy positions for the upcoming year or resolutions that will continue on until there, you know, so it's sort of, you know, W A S B uses it when they are lobbying or discussing with legislature on, on what school boards in Wisconsin want. Uh, so obviously we are only one vote. I am the representative from E C A S D that will attend the delegate assembly. Sorry, I lost the word there. Maybe I needed an additional cup of coffee. This year there are nineteen? There, there are more than last year. Last year there was ten, this year there are more. Um, I asked each of my colleagues to review them. Thank you, Dr. Johnson, for sending the electronic version before I had received my hard copy at home. Uh, that allowed us to hopefully maybe get a little jumpstart on it. Um, and without reading them, I said, let's, we'll start with a baseline of just instructing me to vote yes on each of them. Uh, so at this time I would, I would, the first thing I want to do, I guess, is hear which ones, um, you would like polled for discussion in that you may not want to vote, uh, want to instruct me to vote yes. After that, I think, you know, whatever is left over that nobody had any objections to, we'll make one motion to instruct me to vote yes on those. And then we'll visit each of the ones that get polled for an individual discussion, you know, hopefully they don't go too long. I hesitate to bring it up because it will add potential time, but amendment, we could also propose amendments to them at the assembly. Uh, you know, we've done that in the past from this district. I think the first year that I served as the, uh, but anyhow, Dr. Johnson, I see your light on, so I, uh, if you would just note for me which ones you'd like to, um, pull from the sort of consent and discuss individually.
Resolution twenty-three oh two.
Twenty-three oh two, that's voter education. Are there any additional that you have? Okay. Any other members, commission reserve?
Oh, can we talk about twenty-three oh seven?
Twenty-three oh seven, I believe is career and technical education. Okay. Any others from other members? That is, uh, opposed federal agency mandates imposed without use of rulemaking process. Dr. Farrar. Are, do you have any others that you would like to discuss individually? Dr. Beekah, Commissioner Lyons, Commissioner Clements, are there any that you'd like to highlight?
No, you got mine.
So I have, I remember I have, uh, res, twenty-three oh two voter education, twenty-three oh seven career and technical education, and twenty-three fourteen opposed federal agency mandates imposed without use of rulemaking process. Have I missed any of them? Okay. Uh, so then I would, uh, request a motion to instruct the E C A S D WASP delegate, W A S B delegate, uh, which is I, to vote yes on all resolutions bar, yeah, uh, barring twenty-three oh two, twenty-three oh seven and twenty-three fourteen.
Almost.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion? Again, so the motion is to instruct our, the E C A S D W A S B, uh, delegates to vote yes on all of the proposed resolutions barring twenty-three oh two, twenty-three oh seven and twenty-three fourteen. All those in favor, please say aye. And opposed? I'll get there eventually, Commissioner Clements, I'm sorry. Uh, and any opposed? Okay, so I will vote yes. I intend to do kind of a report as I did last year that will give a little bit of the summary of what happens, but my instruction will be to vote yes. I will use judgment if there are amendments proposed to these. Um, let's go through them one at a time. The first one is that we will consider individually is twenty-three oh two voter education. Dr. Johnson, if you would please leave discussion to just talk about, um, what you would like to us to consider as we decide how to, how to instruct me to vote.
Yeah, yeah, I, 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 as I, as I was reading through, I, uh, this is somewhat comical, given the fact I, I was the one that, uh, polled the, the resolution, uh, last year, because WASP made the decision to actually remove themselves from the National Education Association membership due to quote unquote, uh, uh, not wanting to actually seem politicized. However, uh, and I, I guess I, I have not, and I, I will, uh, entertain, uh, one of the principals from the high school and or middle schools, uh, uh, I, I was under the impression that voter education, uh, in the rationale is actually go with the process of voting or what it means to vote, that that was covered in civics and government. Uh, uh, to, 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 to a, to a certain degree. However, my, my, my concern is for the second piece is that if you, if it, you support voter education, given in light of kind of where public education stands, there could be the implication, uh, of, uh, of indoctrination concerns with the inclusion of actually like voter education. Cause one in terms of, uh, uh, one could actually lead, lend itself to actually the supporting of individuals, not only like participating in the process of voting, but voting a certain way, depending on how that learning experience, where that learning experiences take place, given the fact that, uh, there are certain individuals view that, uh, that the educational environment indoctrinates one in one way or the other. And, and so for me, to pull voter education out of the whole concepts of civics and government, I, I, um, I, I don't know. And I, and I, and I just think it's, it's, there's, there's, there's some optics, given our, our current political climate. Pulling and or just saying voter, adding voter education will speak to a segment, uh, 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 in, in our community, uh, a way that I'm, I'm not sure it's actually intended to actually, uh, 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 say. So for me, that's, I, 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 I'm, I'm troubled by that, but maybe, so i- in civics and government, do they no more talk about actually the, the, the? Do they not do that? Like, cause I, I guess I remember in my civic, like that, that was, they talked about actually like, like, like voting. And, and, and so voter education in the rationale is actually, it's a responsible component. Civics and government is a responsible component. But what actually, and so to remove and or highlight this addition, only this addition, the optics of it do not actually look good, given the political climate, it could be making a contempt of an indoctrination. But that's, that's, that's for me, uh, uh, I, I would not be comfortable, uh, 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 a- adding that, but that's just my take.
Commissioner Zer?
Yeah, so, you know, looking at that list, um, of, of, of subjects, programming and, and subjects, those are all, uh, certified, uh, staff positions. Uh, every, everything there is a job that somebody, um, has been trained to educate students in. And voter edu, you know what I mean? Like, that's a cert, that's a, that's a credential that you, you put on your resume, you know? And, and voter education is not something that our teachers are certified to teach. I mean, they're certified to teach civics and government, but voter education, who's going to do that? Do you know what I mean? And who in our schools, I mean, so it, it begs the question, opens the door for me there, for non-certified staff to actually be teaching our students something, um, that should be done by, I mean, so, so the, the question is not that, like, will our schools not use their civics and government teachers to teach voter education? Almost certainly, like, that would make the most sense, right? Like, if, if we actually put it in there, then, you know, the civics and government teachers are probably likely to do it, right? Your political science teachers or whatever, history teachers, whoever's teaching that. My concern is that what if a district doesn't have that capacity or doesn't have, you know what I mean? And they just get some outside group to come in and teach their kids voter, you know what I mean? So my, my, my concern is what does that kick a door open for, um, in, in, in terms of it being non-certified staff? And, you know, I, I mean, I've seen really amazing, you know, non-partisan groups come and set up tables and register young people to vote. And I think that's really fantastic that those, that those groups are allowed to come in and, and, and work with kids to get them in the system so they can make their voices heard. I think that's really wonderful. Um, but as far as education, I think that needs to fall under certified staff position, and, and I think it already exists in civics and government.
Other discussion? Or of course we, go ahead, Dr. Farrar.
I would just be very brief, uh, just to follow up on the last point, which is that, um, this is already part of what's taught. This is a weird duplication that's completely unnecessary. Um, it's not true that students don't learn about voting and the political process that we have in the nation and state. The end.
Other discussion or again, a, a motion to instruct the W A S B delegate to vote in certain way? Whichever way you'd like to move is.
I would make a, I, I, I would make a motion that, uh, uh, our, our E S C, E C A is the, uh, designate vote no on resolution twenty-three oh two, not, uh, acting the underlying language to the existing resolution three point zero one C.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion on the motion?
Only discussion, could you, uh, could the designate provide, uh, a summary of like the talking points? Because it would be, it would be hypocritical of WASP to actually, to, to make this the political ploy that they did about actually removing ourselves from the national organization of not wanting to incite any type of political alignment.
Sure.
And then, um, so I would just be curious about how that discussion actually went, because this, this in its sense is actually, someone make the argument that this is actually a pull.
Sure.
Insight.
Whichever way I vote on all these, I'll try to, um, give a short summary. I don't, like, sometimes it goes, and, and who knows what will be talked about and what won't. But I'll, I'll certainly, I, I will say that the, all of the resolutions come from resolutions proposed by member districts to W A S B, and then they have a resolutions committee that takes those and kind of works them into sort of a distilled sort of a, a, a method. So I, I think maybe you're just talking about W A S B as the organization of school boards. They're not, I, I, I actually don't remember if this one is proposed. I can dig through, but in general, they come from from member, but I will, I will try to make sure that I, I put down the talking points to give a little bit of the story of what was on each of the resolutions. So any other discussion on the, the motion? So again, the motion on the floor is to instruct, uh, me as the designate to the delegate assembly to vote no on twenty-three oh two voter education. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And any opposed? Okay, I will vote no for twenty-three oh two. Uh, we'll now move on to twenty-three oh seven, that is career and technical education. Commissioner Zer, I will give you the floor first to talk about why you'd like to discuss this, and then we'll open it for general discussion.
Sure. So bear with me, this is my wheelhouse. Um, and, and I agree with, so I, I might not even recommend that we vote no on this, but I, I would be, if I didn't say something, I, I wouldn't be doing myself justice here. So, um, I agree with everything in here, except the including renewable. except the including renewable energy and sustainability CTE. So here's what I want to say, career and technical education has right now in the state of Wisconsin and, and nationally six areas, there's business, there's health, um, family and consumer science, marketing, ag, technology, um, and engineering, which is where right now renewable energy and sustainability falls. Okay, so it, it falls under, already under a wing of CTE. Probably the most glaring mission in career and technical education in the state of Wisconsin is not sustainability and renewable energy. It actually already has a home in CTE. What does not is education and training. So we actually do not have career and technical education. We don't even have a career and technical education student organization that's recognized by the state. Now, we have one, we have educators rising, but there, there is, but it is not even recognized. So students who go into that can't even get an industry-recognized credential as a young educator. So I mean, my problem with this, and I can tell you in the world, in, in this world, when something like this gets in here, the reason why is because there are very large businesses with a whole heck of a lot of money who are trying to solve their own workforce challenges by getting a bunch of state money to go into high schools to feed their, feed their industry. Now, and, and this is happening in the central part of the state in a big, big way right now, Align Energy and it, it's just, it's a big, big thing. Um, and I'm not saying that, that renewable energy and sustainability doesn't deserve its own career and technical education program. I'm not saying that CTE doesn't need a whole boatload of money. Districts wouldn't be way better off if we just had a lot more resources there. My, I think where I, where I draw, where, where my key point is, is of all things, why this when it's already, when it actually already has uh, a kind of a home within our schools? And why aren't we, why are we not, if we're advocating for career and technical education money, doing ourselves as school districts some favors? And actually giving our school districts money from the state to go into education and training career and technical certification program? So I, family and consumer science sometimes houses education, but not all the time and not in all districts. And so I, I mean, I don't know, that's just my, that's just my little thing here. So if I were to I'm fine if we vote for this, but I think that it is oddly specific. I take issue a bit with with this being the program that WASP decided to throw itself behind. And I have a, a pretty strong hunch as to why. When, when, when these kids already have industry-recognized credentials, they already have career and technical student organizations, they already have recognized career pathways. Where teachers, future teachers in our schools, in our high schools, they do not have that. So, you know, that's, that's just my, they even have youth apprenticeship pathways, these renewable energy kits. So it, it's, I just think that um it's the wrong, it's the wrong CTE program to be throwing our our weight behind. Not that I, again, we can vote for it, but I just have really strong opinions about this, this is the wrong, it's just very wrong from a professional standpoint. This isn't what we should be doing.
Any other comments or motion?
I'd just say that the problem is right in the rationale. About needing both students and employers needs. Our schools need to meet our students' needs. The end. The, yeah, and yeah, that's all I have to say.
It can be both.
It can be both.
I think that we, we have a responsibility as, as a education business that desperately needs really smart people to be teachers, that we would, we would invest in our kids to, to become future teachers who are, you know, passionate about that. So I, I mean, I don't think it's, it's necessarily I mean, I, if, if I were to make a motion, I would be to make a motion to amend either to add um, education and training alongside energy and sustainability. Or to just strike including energy and sustainability um, from the language and just leave it general. And then give us some more money for CTE so that we can do what we want. But I think that um, that, that coming uh coming up for, oh, for education here is, is critically important.
So I, I, I will, I will move, I will make a motion to uh vote yes uh with the amendment of striking language, including renewable energy, sustainable CTE, and just leaving it career and technical education programs in school districts.
Can we handle this in the, like, can you, can we just have a clean motion to vote yes, and then we'll do a motion to amend? Okay?
Yeah, I move to uh vote yes uh on the existing resolution uh 3.60.
2307.
Twenty-three, yeah, 2307.
Motion to vote yes on 2307, is there a second? Second? Right, uh, discussion on the motion, not Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I would like to make an amendment to the motion that I just proposed to uh strike the language including renewable, the underlying language, including renewable energy sustainability CTE, and just uh leaving it that it reads, the WASP supports the development of career and technical education programs in school districts.
Okay, uh, there's a motion to amend to strike the phrase, including renewable energy sustainability CTE. Is there a second on the amendment?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Clements. Uh, so, okay, so we're just talking about the proposed amendment. So any discussion on the proposal to instruct me to pose an amendment of striking, including renewable energy sustainability CTE? Go ahead, Commissioner Clements.
Yep, my, my comment is, I think that's similar to uh others, is that this is probably needed in this area, but um, I think that it's needlessly narrow, the way that it's phrased, and just getting more resources for education is gonna be tough in this current political environment, and so therefore just trying to get more resources into CTE is where we should be focused, rather than trying to split, kind of split hairs between specific areas within it.
Any other comments or discussion?
Uh, I think that Commissioner Clements stated that actually much more particularly than I did. So I, I think that um career and technical education is partially funded through Perkins, which is federal grant. You know, so it, there is some, again, this is multiple layers removed from actually ever happening. So I, what we're talking about right now is like this funny thing that is probably never gonna happen. But I know that there is a lot of work being done at the state level, both from DPI, um, within the governor's budget, both in DPI and in DWD to support this work. So I know that this is something that like is, is, is really being considered, and I think that, that um Commissioner Clements is right, that, that it's really easy for business and industry to come in and want to grab that money that would might come from the state to, to fill their own, or you know what I mean, to solve their own problems. And I think that that really in CTE programs, um, you know, these teachers are sometimes sharing kids, you know what I mean? Some, some teachers are, are, are teaching in multiple CTE content areas. Um, so you know, this might even be in agriculture, some of the, some of these um renewable energy and sustainability courses may be taught by ag teachers, um, natural resource teachers. So, you know, I think that just getting more money into our schools to support career and technical education and the things listed in that last line, I think Commissioner Clements is quite right, and I think that this is the right amendment.
So too, I think that's kind of. Dr. Bika?
I would say striking sustainability is a contradiction with our own district goals, and I don't think there's a way to communicate that during the delegation that's gonna be adequate. So I, I wouldn't vote against this, I would retain that, and I would add the piece about that, about education that Commissioner Zer is talking about as an opportunity that doesn't, nothing comes of the, the delegation, but it plants the seed.
Other discussion on the amendment? So hearing none, the uh motion is to amend 2307 to remove including renewable energy sustainability CTE. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed? Aye. So I think Beeken or Dean on the opposition. However, the amendment carries, so that is uh struck. Uh, so now we will return to considering the, the motion is to vote yes on 2307 as amended, and as a reminder, that is, the amendment is removing including renewable energy sustainability CTE. Any discussing, discussion on the motion or further amendments?
Can you make a motion to approve as amended?
Right, we're on that right now, so that-
Oh, sorry.
That's where we are. I mean, you can, you can call a question if you wanna cut off the discussion.
I need the coffee, sorry.
All right, seeing or hearing none, the motion is to approve, to, to instruct me as the WASB delegate to vote yes on 2307 as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed? So that was just Dr. Bika on the opposition there. So I will vote yes on 2307, and I will do my best to, the procedure for amendments is a little bit changed from the last time I offered one. I will do my best to find that and propose that amendment if no one beats me to it. Uh, before we go on to 2314, uh, I did look back at the packet that they sent, the hard copy that shows the member resolutions that were submitted. All three of the ones that we're discussing were submitted by member boards as opposed to developed by the uh WASB committee themselves. So, and if you're interested, you're welcome to, I can let you look at them and what, what they're read there. So that's just an informational piece. I will still report on the talking points or any discussion that happens. Uh, we're now on to 2314, opposed federal agency mandates imposed without use of rulemaking process. Uh, Dr. Farrar, I'll start with you, as you were the one who brought this up.
So the key to this is, once again, the rationale. Example given. An example given was that um school districts that participate in any federal child nutrition programs must enforce prohibitions on sex discrimination to include discrimination on the basis of gender identity and sexual orientation. In other words, this is a process um that federal agencies have used to create equity in our public schools specifically. And all the other examples of ways that this process have been used would similarly demonstrate that that process is used to create equity in our schools. Other examples uh in previous times have been um to require students to be able to use the bathroom that uh matches their gender identity and other similar issues of access to participation in public school. I actually think that this is a good thing that um as a, as a mode of oversight. Now, could, could uh a federal agency uh use this process to do something bad? Sure, maybe, um, but the example given here and the examples that have happened in life so far uh have been in support of equity for students. And while our district is uh making efforts in, in this direction, not every district is making similar efforts in this direction. And uh I agree that students should eat and uh go to school having eaten. And I think that that um use of federal oversight in terms of um making sure that those dollars are used and, and, and do provide an incentive for districts to pursue a bare minimum of inclusiveness for their students. And uh, that's what led me to uh talk about this one.
Other comments or discussion? Dr. Bika?
Just a question, a process question. Do you happen to know from previous year's experience that the district tampered forwards a resolution? There's a kind of a vetting process, or just it automatically goes onto the slate?
No, it goes through the, it's like a resolutions committee, I believe. So no, it, there is a, there is a review committee, and so it's likely that the resolution sent forward by I can just look at, well, whatever district it is, if I happen to see it here, I'll uh, this came from New London. It's likely that it was modified within that committee.
London, actually, then.
Then I can, I can look more, but my pile of papers has become a mess here as I've gone through the, so I apologize, but that, that is my understanding of the process is you know, member districts, you know, pass a resolution and send it on to WASB, that committee views and molds it into something that is we saw a similar thing with the mascots uh resolutions, they were differently worded than, than what eventually appeared both the first year and the second year, if you'll remember, that was up two years in a row with, you know, different language each year. Any other comments? Obviously, Dr. Farrar, this is the one that I also had flagged for a discussion and much along the same lines of, of what you reported, so uh should a motion be made to instruct me to vote no? I would be happy to support that.
I would love to make a motion to instruct you to vote no on 2314. Opposed federal agency mandates imposed without use of rulemaking process.
The packet.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion or amendments on the motion? Seeing no discussion, uh, the motion is to instruct the WASB delegates from ECSD to vote no on resolution 2314. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And those opposed? So I will vote no on 2314. That includes those that were uh brought up. Uh, just, I make sure that my understanding is that of what we just voted. Uh, I will be voting yes on all uh resolutions with the following exceptions. I will vote no on 2302 voter education. I will endeavor to propose a amendment. Again, I, like, before it was very clear, there was like a meeting to call into. Now, that doesn't appear to be an option, so I'll have to figure out how that, that works, and they have some pretty strict rules that I just saw about how, anyway, that's for me to figure out over the next week. And uh, with, as, as we amended it, which is striking, including renewable energy slash sustainability CTE. Uh, and uh I will yes with that amendment, and then I will vote no on 2314 as well. That accord with everybody else's understanding of what we've just agreed to? Great. Uh, so then we will move on to our last item of the night, which is our regular debrief, and I will turn it over to Commissioner Lyons to lead us through one thing we did well and one thing that we can continue to improve on as a board.
Okay. One thing we did well and one thing we can improve as a board, and we'll start with you, Commissioner Zer.
Why do I think going first? The zer thing, just never went first as a kid. Thing we did well. Uh, I don't know, I think the thing I feel like, like we did well tonight is, is um I feel like we're getting better. I feel like we're getting better every, every time we go through these monitoring cycles of, of just how our comfort levels with them, you know what I mean? And our ability to kind of get at the meat of what, you know, and now like coming through this second process, I feel like the first year, I honestly, I didn't know what I wanted to see. Like, it was just, I almost just felt like, yeah, sure, that looks fine. I mean, that's, I really didn't feel like I had a lot of, and now, as more questions, you know, or as more like, we kind of begin to see this bigger picture of how everything fits together and what everyone's working on and what the directors are prioritizing. And how that's trickling, how that work is trickling down and how that work is trickling up. I feel like we just get more, I just get more, I'm just like, I've gotten more clear on perhaps some of the in-between of how we get there. And I, and I know what to ask for more, you know what I mean? And I feel like we, I hear that more of like, we need more clarity on financial, future financial, you know, like, just those little things that we're asking for with more clarity, and I've been grateful for that. One thing we could do better. No, I mean, we stayed on time. It's also, I'm just going to do two things we did well. We're going to end before nine o'clock tonight. Done.
Commissioner Johnson?
I yield my time to the speaker.
Chair Nordin.
I do think we're doing, we're improving our ability to understand what it is that we're looking for in monitor reports. Dr. Johnson, I appreciate your eye for looking for ways that we can streamline it for the administration as well as for us, because, you know, we did, I think some of these are, since we didn't fully, you know, know what all do we need to make sure that we can monitor effectively, let's make sure that we don't miss anything. And I think having that eye and, and getting to know better, what information do we need? What information do we need to look for is, is something that I, we're improving on. And then ways that we can then make it easier and reduce that workload for the administration, but still be able to effectively monitor. I feel like that is strength. I think we will continue to get more efficient in our own discussion of it. We are going to end on time. We also started 20 minutes before our planned time because of the, you know, not having public comments tonight. And so, you know, but I think we can continue to, to find ways to improve, especially on the OEs, how to, how to move through them smoothly while still making sure that we monitor and have those questions answered fully. Commissioner Farrar?
I'll second that, I think we're getting better at responsive to the reports in meaningful ways. I think that the newest board member, I'm still learning a lot about how to do that effectively. And I'll just, that's room for growth for me is to continue to develop as a board member.
Mr. Bika?
I think, I'm thinking a lot about the student representatives tonight with the student success. And I think something that we did not, as we prepared for coherent governance, there's just not a lot of literature, there's not maybe any literature on how do you mentor your student representatives? Because student representatives are a unique feature in all of our board. So I think to do a better job of how are we going to formally mentor you to be able to engage.
Commissioner Clements?
Although I missed the first 45 minutes or so, I noticed that, at least during, during the part that I was present for, that we were very direct in responding to those elements of the OE reports. And I think that we